Welcome to the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, August 12th, 2024. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Motion to approve. A motion to approve agenda item number one, consent agenda for the closed session and regular session of July 22nd.
Second.
The second, the council member green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Let the record reflect that the votes unanimous with all council members present. Jimmy, we'll hold your item until after. Hold it. Okay. So we'll begin this evening with item two A, which is the interns presentations. Do you want to wait for a moment for Jake?
We can wait for Jake.
Okay. Well, then we'll begin with the financial highlights. Two B, Natalie, you're up. Say that quick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Perfect. So I can pull your brains through numbers.
Perfect.
So the summary is just the summary of fiscal '24 year end, six thirty, 2024 financials. We still receiving some revenue, so expecting to receive, and we're still. So the numbers will adjust, they will change, and they will be audited and adjusted, obviously, for certain general entries after the audit. The audit is coming September 9th. They will be here for a week. We're in a pool here for the audit, pulling all the information. We will have a single audit again, and the qualification for that is if we have expensed more than $150,000 in grants, we require a single audit. So this year will be maybe a little bit extensive because of the single audit. Pretty much the same presentation as you always see. I try not to change because that's kind of helping everybody to be familiar. But overall, General Fund is our main fund, the largest fund to operate for the town of Berlin. It is responsible for all of the general accounting for public works, for administration, finance, elected officials. Main revenues derived from the General Fund come in from taxes, grants, licenses, permits, and intergovernmental revenues, which is highway revenues, room tax, ANA tax, several revenues from the income tax. All of that combined under the General Fund and accounted for the General Fund expenses by the budget, which is approved by the mayor council. General Fund runs a little bit different from overall the enterprise funds. General Fund is a mixture between accrual and cash basis, what it means. So it's not operated just like regular business per se, where the utility funds are more run by like a business revenues, less expenses. At the end of the year, we have income allowance. So I have a quick, I'm expecting some interns. Thank you. Fiscal '24, the first column to the left, you see budget, which we're already all familiar. The year is close. There were some budget adjustments as of December because we shifted some ARPO grant towards different expenditures, and also we have issued a bond, general obligation bond for the public works. You see the bond proceeds of $2.8 million. So overall budget total had increased because of the amount we have included. But nonetheless, it's all pretty much the same fiscal '24. The actual expenses, the total revenue received as of six thirty is almost $13 million. I am accounting for $2.8 because those funds are available for us to proceed with the construction of public works. But the way this bond works, so we don't have $2.8 sitting in cash, it's on a reimbursable basis. As we proceed with the construction, we will request payment and it will advance the money. But I'm just showing that the funds are available. Property taxes at 4.6. It's in par with what been budgeted of pretty much close to 4.6. I think we have received all of it. There is some receivable for that revenue line item. Other taxes out there, we have seen a big increase from income tax and room tax. I was really surprised with the full of that year. That gives us a hopeful fiscal '25 that the business, the hotels and motel business doing really good, and everybody's reporting their revenues correctly, obviously. Contributed grants, it's all of the grant that we receive from other government agencies, including our Worcester County unrestricted grant, and also there is our money, so that included. Impact fees is a little bit behind, and I think we're closing the year being a little bit short of not collecting them in the full amount of 130 that we projected to receive. But if we look at fiscal '23, it's very close. If we take away the $2.8 million in bonds, the amount is very close to fiscal '23. So '24 is above, but very close. It's a good trend to see the items lined up. The graph that I have here is revenues budgeted by source, just budgeted. We've seen that graph before, but the largest amount coming from property taxes, then we have grants, and then we have contributed revenues from other funds that we receive as well. The expense part of it, broken down by categories. Obviously, each category carries multiple expenditures under umbrella of general government. We have finance department, elected officials, economic development. Then we have public safety, which includes police department and the fire. Public works stated separately, planning and community development, recreation parks, debt service for the outstanding loans and bonds, and then we have capital outlay, which all of the projects and the assets that have been purchased. Also, I have included on the bottom as well, the 2.8 bond, and we have a net over change of a balance, which basically taking the revenues, less the expenditures, less the proceeds from the long-term debt of $3.2 million. It's above of actual, which is very good. I'm hoping it will remain on the same amount or even more since we will close the year in the later terms. The expenses by category for fiscal '24 General Fund, the largest is public safety. Then we have general government, public works, planning, community, recreation parks. Fund balance fiscal '24 compared to fiscal '23. Just a reminder, we have several layers in the General Fund, accounted for different categories. The first is non-spendable, that's the amount still outstanding from sewer and stonewall, and we are in a good repayment plan for several years, so this amount should be decreased in fiscal '24. Restricted, we have slots revenues, and I have added opioid funds. It's small amount out there. We are $12,000 collected, but because it's monies that need to be assigned for a specific project, I'm placing them with restricted revenues. Committed is impact fees, debt reduction in the disaster recovery funds, 1.7 million. Assigned insurance, police forfeiture, capital, stabilization, community center, and I'm placing here a layouts funded as well because it's assigned by the mayor and council for specific purposes. We have a total as of six thirty of $3.9 million, almost four. Unassigned fund is basically the difference that you saw on the previous page. That amount will change as we close the year and we will do the audit. So overall, the total fund balance as of June 2024 is 10 and a half million versus fiscal 2023 is 10 million, round into the nearest. The explanation and description of which layer of General Fund, I'm not going to give any details for that. The graph, I have not updated for fiscal '24 simply because it will change, but to see for 2017 through 2023, the blue top is unassigned. We see the increase and the slow but steady grow over a couple of years, and I expect that fiscal '24 be a little bit larger. Same summary, but just in a more descriptive way, with a total balance of $10,598,473. Our capital projects and assets, and I'm listing all of it up here in details just to see how much being accomplished with fiscal '24. I think fiscal '24 is very successful in comparison with fiscal '23. We carried a lot of them from prior year to our current, not current, but closing year fiscal '24, but I think what been budgeted in '24 have been completed, pretty much, not all, but a big portion of it. We have installed a new IT server. Then we have completed the Vicon strategic plan. Heron Park demolition as of 216,000 of expenses, and I'm placing those, which I copied that from internet. Town hall brick wall down, town hall AC unit been replaced. We did expense a little bit for Berlin Bike Way, but the grant that we have applied for Berlin Bike Way wasn't successful, so we're not proceeding with the expenditures so far. So we have a better future plan.
Just as I fly, we are reapplying this go around. The county has kept their funding in place for us because we did receive the caveat to the funding from the county was that we needed to receive grant funding from the state in order to keep their match. We were not successful with that. We actually secured grant funding through the federal level, so then they honored our request. I think Natalie and Sarah brought that up in the meeting, that I was bummed that we had to do it back, and you all brought up the idea of asking, saying, well, we did receive a grant and they accepted it. So we will reapply this coming spring.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you. Police department have purchased split camera, portable radios, and have purchased and equipped the 2024 Chevy Tahoe. Public Works have purchased trailer and started a public works facility. We are in kind of still beginning of the phase, so that small amount is just the planning and basically bond fees out there. For sanitation, we have updated and purchased new trash cans and waste boilers. Streets, there's a small amount for just pass paving. There is no major street repairs, but we have purchased a Ford F-550 dump truck, which is shared with water resources. Snowplows, West Street roadway improvement, there is a $46,000 in expenses. Seahawk Drive line stripe in, which is reimbursed by the grant in fiscal '25. That's not that straight.
They declined that.
They declined that.
The grant that we, what's we counting? We did ask for the split share.
Yes.
That was declined.
Okay. Street signs.
We'll ask again this coming.
I think so.
That's not going way over.
Zero turmoil, and there was trailers purchased for the streets. So I consider that's a lot done.
A lot more. Great job on tracking all the too.
So that's all for General Fund. If you have any questions, stop me now with that for General Fund.
So Natalie, just so that when this goes online, I just want to make sure. So you put, how do I word this? The parentheses used in the General Fund indicate increases over budget. So for example, I'll just pick one. On page three of the slide, license and permits. We budgeted 234,500. The actual is 363,11, so the difference is 128,511, which is in parentheses.
It's an excess revenue meaning credit, which is bigger amount than what was budgeted. So if you have an amount larger than the budget amount or the revenue portion of it, meaning it's revenue is all of its credit, so the parenthesis mean it's an excess over the budget.
Okay.
I think in this case, it's a function of the formula.
Right.
It produces a negative number because of how the subtraction works, but it's in reality, it's an excess.
Clear it up for those who check it out.
It's a good question.
Thank you, Mary. If you take 234,500, subtract, just in a simple math, 363,011, you will have minus the number, so it's an excess. If we go to impact fees, 130 minus 120, have a deficit of that, so it's a positive number. But if you want me to change it.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I just wanted to clear it up.
Okay.
For anyone who might have, who might have questioned on why there looks like a lot.
I might insert there on the top saying that over credit, something in description by the different difference.
Yeah, that would, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there outstanding, are there outstanding expenses that you know?
Not many, but we still have some invoices that we are waiting from the vendors to be received. I'm not talking about a lot. I'm talking about maybe a couple.
A dollar back.
Below probably 10,000 overall.
Natalie, I thought I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, that the General Fund operates on both a cash and accrual basis? Can you explain that a little more? Because I thought you had to elect one or the other.
So through the year, we record revenues as they receive. If we receive a check today, for example, we will record it today, and we continue doing that all the way through the end of the year. At the end of the year, we'll look at what we are missing for fiscal '24. When I say missing, what else potentially we could pay or we could receive as revenues? So then we would record that as receivable. That's where I say that it's a pretty much both. I record a receivable part to recognize a revenue that I'm waiting. For example, if I have four quarter or slots revenues as a perfect example, they're always about two to three months behind. So we go, I'm going on the calendar here, for example. We go January through November, month by month, recording the revenues. And then we come to December, and we wait for November and December, which will come in February. So then I will record that revenue as receivable.
To keep it all.
To keep it in the fiscal year. But in the same time, it's a combination of both.
Got you. Thank you.
Electric fund. Here's a little bit of kind of not struggle, but the expenses, we have contributed from reserve 600,000, and we also issued a bond for AMI meters, the smart meters. The bond is well available, I'm adjusting the budget, and you can see out there a million dollars. But we have planned to use the reserve from prior year mostly for capital projects. When I was closing the year for fiscal '24, there is a small little income of 8,826. I'm hoping that this will remain. The bond is still available, but the project itself for AMI meters have not started. We're still in the planning. Overall, the expenses, I see a lot of increases for electric equipment, supplies, and everything. So even though the budget looks like it's way over the budget, if you look at 8.3 and take out the million dollars for the capital projects, the expenses are within the lines, but we only see a little bit of increase at the end of the year. There are charges for services, there's a decrease in purchase power, but in the same time, there is a decrease for the sale of electricity as well. I can tell you that we have a large amount of outstanding for the electricity. So because through winter cold months and then summer hot months, especially with the current Public Service Commission orders, we are mandated not to disconnect. It's helping, of course, people to kind of manage their household, and also we care about the health condition and everything, but it's not helping the fund overall to be financially sound. As of right now, it is okay. Everything looks pretty much fine, within the lines, but I would like to see the operating income at the end of the year much larger for the electric because of how expensive their equipment, how much emergency could happen, and things like that.
And historically, this fund's been in good shape.
Very strong. It is in a good shape. It has a good.
No, I mean, like a fiscal position year over year.
Yes. It's fiscal '24, I see that small operating income, and I start looking at the numbers. It just tells me that things has changed. So for fiscal '26, we should look at the budget more.
Now, the difference here is not recoverable in our power cost adjustment, is it?
No.
I don't think so.
No. Hopefully, after we do the electric rate study, we could discuss potential of things that could change because they do see, I'm just looking at the expenses overall, the team can speak for that, or there are things that they purchase, the prices like tripled and quadrupled.
So Natalie, I don't want to stay too long on this particular topic, but it did, someone did mention this to me, and I was curious, is there a way we can look to see when we, if I explain this, when we, is there a way to have a number on how much we're actually saving when we generate?
Yeah, 100,000 per kilowatt hour?
Yes. We're saving a lot.
Yeah, that's a, that's a rough number, but it's.
It's a rough number.
Oh, 500,000.
We can, we can get this number to be exact because there are calculations behind of it. To generate is basically a saving because once you generate and you push the electricity back to the grid, there are certain charges that are minimized, and also we receive a better weight from the AMP in American Power, so.
I mean, I don't want to add additional work, but as we are coming up on this need for a rate study or study that we're anticipating, I think, I think a year, maybe a three-year, four-year graph of how much we've saved would be good information.
I'm pretty sure it's available already, Mary.
Yeah, I didn't leave that. I'll prepare for us.
Oh, when I say they, there is, we always have a meeting with AMP every year. They go over the general stuff, and also Booth and Associates tracks it for us.
Okay, then I'll.
The Dell level.
Booth and Associates is our administrator on that.
Electric engineering company.
Yeah.
Other than that, like we're under what we could be actually saving because of the capacity at the plant. We're down, what, two engines? Three? I think two engines.
That seems much.
Okay. Well, don't put me on that. We are down some.
Taking a round of the rain.
And you'll see it in Tim's capital plans. Each year, he wants the two new natural gas generators there, and that would get us closer to the capacity limit that we need.
And then more savings.
More savings, but also more resiliency for the town because right now, we currently would not have enough generation power to be able to run the entire town in the event of an issue. So we'd like to get to that threshold, but each one of those generators, two plus, I would say like 200,000.
Very expensive.
So.
And now to just add to it, the rate study that we're doing and is in process, it will not adjust or change a power cost adjustment per, it is calculated solely on how much the power cost that we purchase, what's the credit for the generation, what's the transmission charges. So it is not something that the town of Berlin will decide going forward, let's say, we decided to increase or decrease. It's not up to us. The rate study that we're conducting to see overall, the capital planning, the other fees, the equipment costs, so it is overall operational and capital part of the whole entire electric fund, not just the actual rates.
We're also working with the other four electric utilities in the state that are municipal to approach the legislature about deregulating or making them member regulated, like what they did with CHOP ten, so then we wouldn't have the Public Service Commission to contend with, and we can make those adjustments in accordance with like somebody like Booth and Associates, but make those adjustments for capital costs and also make those adjustments for times when we see these types of situations. Because each year, each time we do a rate case, it's what? How much does a rate case cost?
The last year was around 100,000, but that's.
So each time we want to adjust the rates, not counting the fees that we have to do with legal and all of that to go to Baltimore.
Yes, I'm talking about overall cost, the legal cost between the engineer and between Public Service Commission that we have to pay the fee to be part of it, so it is a lot involved.
So we have to have a meeting scheduled with them this week, the other electric utilities to see if some of them are in a bad situation.
I will.
Power plant and electric capital projects and assets for fiscal '24, transformer control boxes, overhead transformers. There is a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado purchased, utility poles, then Victorian streetlights, power plant relay cabinets that Tim's been talking for years about, it finally finished. EV charging station transformer, and just gives you an idea of what's the cost of a transformer. And then there is several, not one, head mount transformers been purchased. And actually, I've seen that transformers been received and paid, that been ordered in fiscal '22 just now, so it's like three-year delay.
Was that the 70,000 that we purchased? Are you kidding?
Those were ordered like years ago.
And I think we still have others that have been purchased that we have not.
And we acted on that mid-year to be early.
We don't usually like to buy things before we get them.
If anything for electric fund, we're going to move to water resources. Water fund. Budget overall adjusted, we have some changes out there for capital outlays. We had shifted some grants, 500,000 out there from different projects, but the bottom line did not change. Operating revenues of 1.1 million collected so far, it's a little bit less than what been projected. The expenditures of 1.7, but there's some capital projects that are not completed in fiscal '24. Overall, there is an operating loss, but I'm hoping as we reconcile the fund and close the year and rebalance the capital project versus what been carried forward from fiscal '23, the fund should close in a positive number, so I'm not worried about that.
Thank you.
Sewer fund. I'm so proudly saying that we're doing really good, and I'm hoping that we'll continue doing good, we'll repay back the General Fund, and we close every single year with positive numbers. The operating revenues was projected of 3.6, 3.9 been collected. Special collection fees, unfortunately, at half of what we projected to be. This is our EDU special collection, and it's very important for us to budget and receive them all because they're responsible for the bond cost, for the bond, for the debt service cost, and if needed, for the capital projects.
Because all are fees for the saving grace, my friend.
Yeah. Overall, there is an increase in the fund of 700,000 in comparison with '23, 747, a little bit less, but still a good number, positive number. Capital projects and assets for waterfront and sewer fund. Water fund, that's the dump truck that I've mentioned that they shared with the public works, Powelton Avenue Well House, Harrison Avenue Waterman, Franklin Avenue Wall Number Two. Those are projects that ongoing, we started in fiscal '24, we've re-budgeted them in fiscal '25, and they will continue going on. Harrison Avenue Waterman, the same situation. Smart meter project will be closed. I think we will have maybe a little bit of expenses as we go for adjusting in fiscal '25, but the smart meter projects pretty much complete. Williams Street Water Services is ongoing project, and Harrison Avenue Walls is complete, 136,000. Sewer fund, there is a vehicle, new truck worth at 150. Sewer fund, there is a vehicle, new truck worth at 150. There's another trap collection system, Broad Street lift station, William Street pump station, those projects are complete, West Street lift station is the beginning of it.
Broad, Broad means just the beginning as well.
Beginning of it, yes. William Street complete. Plant, lawn meters, Jamie can explain a little bit better, but basically it's equipment purchased for the waste water plant. Actually about the same thing, automatic gate been installed and drying bed real basic equipment for the treatment plant. Fort Ranger, the spray site been purchased, lawnmower. We have started forest management, that's a study that Jamie would like to complete, which will help in the future to forecast for the spray site and forest management. High tide auto dial and pump lights, those are equipment parts for the spray site. Again, I consider that a lot of fiscal 24 for the water and sewer as well. Stormwater.
Good summary.
Not good. I'm hoping that we will receive all the grants that we have applied for, that's our only hope. We do have ARPA funds available. And then we have also projected a contribution from reserve, which basically carry forward from fiscal 24. But on the positive, a good note, look at the capital outlay, 1.5 million dollars invested in stormwater management, stormwater projects, wetlands, submerged lands, submerged, wetlands. So it is huge, it is positive, even though the fund's losing on the negative of 366, we will hope for the revenues coming from grants. But overall, I think improvement to the stormwater is what matters.
Safe to say it's not going to transfer to the general fund this year?
I hope not, but if it is, it's worth it.
So for stormwater here, is it, is it only that we haven't received the grants that we applied for that made it? So, I mean, I kind of feel that in the midpoint of the fiscal year, we were kind of tapped on how good it was.
It's not that we, it's not that we were not awarded the grants that we applied for. We have now received the official, here's the money, go spend it.
Okay.
And there are a few grants that we're actually in the process of invoicing for the draws right now. That will be a little, little bit.
So yes, the expenses are there, here's the actual breakdown of each grant project. Pine Franklin Nelson, 1.4, Aguilain, 42,000, and Hudson Bridge, 75,000. So.
These are the expenditures.
The actual expenditures for the actual projects.
Yeah, I think you mentioned, you know, the loss is obviously ugly, but it's the projects. And I think we asked people on Pine Franklin Nelson, you know, I think they're very pleased. And this rain falling we've had recently, we're familiar with that area, I mean Nelson Street couldn't travel often. So to me, I'm not so unfortunate to see the loss, but I think it's the grant, you pretty much recapped it well, but it's more of the infrastructure that we see out there and that's where it does kind of bother me sometimes. You say the town's not doing anything about stormwater. Well, but for one thing, it's a massive endeavor.
It is massive.
With the aged infrastructure that we have and, you know, we see the projects that we sometimes don't even know really what's down there, you know, until it happens. And then I think we saw that on Harrison having a banker where.
Pine Franklin Nelson were like that as well.
Some surprises along the way, yeah. So I think, you know, we're doing what we can with stormwater with the grants and everything that we have. But yeah, Jack mentioned, you know, we don't want to see that loss, but I'm hoping that the grants come through that we'll switch it. It's 530 some thousand, I think, outstanding grant differential.
We're going to have the positive vibes out there.
Yeah.
Hey, I mean, this, this vibe right here is positive.
Yes, yeah, the infrastructure is more, more important than the number of H at this particular venture, so absolutely agree.
Yes, I agree.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Natalie? All right, we're going to take a brief break. Jimmy and Tony, do you want to bring Mary up as well?
No.
Natalie, what? Shabang? Shabang, Shaboom.
Oh, Mary?
What was it? Shabang, Shaboom. Come on, everybody. All right. So this isn't on the agenda, but Jimmy, you want to talk about it for a moment and then we'll let We Heart Berlin talk?
So for the last year and a half, we've been working on getting flag poles for the town.
Dressing up?
We've, we started with going to the Legion, other areas that we've discussed with, through volunteer and donations. And we have received, well, so we received 15,000 dollars in donations, which we were able to use the I Heart Berlin as a place to deposit the money.
As a 501(c)(3).
501(c), correct. So, and then, so Tony is here today to present the check to the town for 15,000 dollars so we can purchase.
Love it.
Yeah, 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 we're really stoked to be able to.
We've got four flag poles coming.
Yeah, so highlight them. So they'll be at the War Memorial?
Two at the War Memorial and two at the entrance off of Tripoli in the Stephen Decatur Park, right at Derek 113 and then corner there at Tripoli. So we're going to have two, we're going to have four 30-foot flag poles.
And some big flags when you see.
That's right.
Coming down. Can you get a picture for us if you don't want to see?
I got an email today, by the way.
Uh, well, hold on, only favorable stuff.
It's small ranch.
Okay.
We should have something this week, bud.
That's awesome, because we are trying, August, right, this month, or September, we need to start with our program. Open space.
You need to start some planning.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the end of this week.
The end of this week?
It's the end of August.
Surprise.
And the sixteenth, right?
Oh my goodness.
Cover, cover your fingers on the check account number.
Oh, wow.
There's an account out there?
Good job, boys. All right, guys.
Thank you.
Somebody will tear us up. Good job. Go, Bull.
So, hey Jimmy, excuse me, I'm sorry, the current flag pole, the current flag pole height, is that 30 feet or 50?
20 foot.
20 foot, okay.
The two at the War Memorial are 20 foot. So we're going to keep it up there a little higher, much stronger poles, the poles we have there are fiberglass and they're starting to see wear and tear, so.
Especially in the wind, I don't. So a big bigger flag. So Jimmy's vision is that when you come down North Main, that he wants you to see the flag?
When you turn on 50, you want to see the flag.
Okay, well, too big, Jimmy, but.
You turn on. Power watch on 50, yeah. See how they're pushing it?
I guess it'll suit me, Jimmy, I'm sorry. All right, so back to our program, we're going to head back to agenda item 2A, Town of Berlin Summer Intern Presentations, and we have Arusa and Jake here with us. Come on up and then I put down the microphone, so just pick that up. I'm kind of sad because their time's coming to an end, but.
My gosh, when do you all go back to school?
The 19th.
25th, right around the corner.
I'm sorry, Sarah's on here.
So wait a minute, it's your senior year, right?
Yes, yeah.
And then Jake, what about you?
It's my, I'm going into my sophomore year.
Okay, look at you all growing up.
So go ahead and kick it off.
All right, hi, my name is Arusa. For those of you who don't know, I graduated from Worcester Prep in 2021 and I'm at American University as a political science major, intended on pre-law. So I would first like to thank everyone for just this chance and this opportunity to be here today. I grew up in Ocean City right near Assatee and I got a wonderful chance to go to school in Berlin. So I really consider this small town to be my home, but also a dream place that has formed the way that I am. Going to school in DC has been a wonderful experience and I have a lot of friends who choose to stay in DC for the summertime for internship opportunities or work or whatever it may be. And when they ask me, Arusa, what are you doing for the summer? I always tell them, oh, I'm going home. And I think that is the best answer there is because there's no place I truly would rather be. I've gotten to know so many people through this experience, Miss Ivy, Miss Carolyn, Sarah, obviously Mayor and Council, but obviously all the staff that, you know, contribute so much to themselves, this town. I've, you know, Jake and I, we've had just such a wonderful opportunity to experience so much through so many events. And every time I come back to this town, there's always something new. I mean, for example, through the Merrill, Merrill Music League, I discovered that trax and yaks is new, I have not seen that before and it's such a great new addition to the town. And, you know, I've been working a lot with Miss Carolyn, just organizing so many files, but also getting to know her as a person with, and knowing what the planning and zoning department does. And there's just so many residents in this town and each address is not just a home that was made, but a dedication and a contribution that every resident has made to this town. And I think that's such a beautiful thing because when you look at small town America and you think, wow, you know, this is a town and yes, people live in it, but sometimes I think we forget that all the lives that people live and it's just been such a great thing to come to learn. And yeah, so thank you so much. General pass it. Jake?
All right, I'm, hi, I'm Jake Parker, I'm a rising sophomore at Gettysburg College. I would first like to thank the Town of Berlin, Mayor Zach and Sarah Gorfinkel, who sadly could not be here tonight, for this incredible opportunity. This summer, through working with the Town of Berlin, I was able to learn about the inner workings of local government and how they provide necessary resources to help keep towns such as Berlin safe, clean and thriving. While writing this speech, I thought about how my internship helped me better understand things I learned at college. And one of the first things that came to mind was how the parking pass project I worked, I helped work on highlighted one of the most important issues in collective action. For those of you that don't know, the issue I focused on most heavily this summer was parking, which as most of you do know, can be very difficult in downtown Berlin during the tourist season. In order to mitigate this issue, we needed to find a way to encourage people, specifically employees of businesses in town, to park in the parking lot on Church and Bay Street. One of the most prominent, prominent collective action problems is the free rider issue. In other words, people benefiting from collective action without actually participating in it. So in our case, benefiting from people parking in the church lot without actually parking there themselves. In order to reward those who contributed to our cause, I designed over 300 personalized parking passes and handed them out to employees all across downtown. I then kept track of who was parking in the church lot using macro-enabled Excel spreadsheets that we programmed and we cooperated with local merchants who provided rewards to employees who parked there the most. By providing a resource to incentivize people rather than penalizing them, we showed on a micro scale that the free rider problem in collective action that challenges governments on every level, whether it be local, state or federal, can be resolved through positive reinforcement. In conclusion, it has been an honor and not to mention a pleasure to serve the coolest small town in America and I'm extremely grateful to have met so many amazing people who help Berlin remain as one of the most unique places in our country.
Thank you both. I thank you. And Jake is from Sarah's alma mater. So I remember when your application came through, she said, oh, this one's mine. All right, so I think both of you have lived up to the expectations that we have for each one of you. Typically, we only take on one intern for a semester, but I think seeing both of you rise to the occasion through, one, your interviews and then, two, your resumes and how you present and speak, led us to want to take on two interns and I think it worked out very, very well this year. So I can't thank you enough on behalf of everybody from the Town of Berlin, from our staff, to the residents, to the business owners, we're going to miss you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, who wants to break down? What about the council?
Well, I'll say, Arusa, I think you're going into the right field. That was incredibly impressive. But I didn't notice, Jake, thank you too. I want to ask you a question about the parking.
Yes.
So I definitely noticed that lot being much more utilized this summer, so that's a success, I think. How do you feel, from your perspective, if you were looking at it every day as far as the passes that you gave out, how successful was it in your mind?
I'd say it was a great success. I've heard like, even when I'm like not even interning, I'll be like in town just at the farmer's market and people will like question me about it. So I think it really was, had a good impact on the town and I feel like I haven't heard as many complaints about parking.
Thanks. No, really, thank you guys. It's a big way to get to know you, they do a lot, maybe a couple times, so.
You're actually good. You're actually good.
I just want to say thank you and I appreciate all the work that you've done and awesome. Good luck this year and good luck in your pre-law. And Jake, what is your major?
Political science and public policy.
All about the political science folks. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much and you guys will be missed, so.
I just want to say thank you both. Your, your work here and your heartfelt presentations, in my opinion, were tremendous. Thank you for your work and thank you to your, for your commitment and your service to the Town of Berlin and our citizens. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly want to applaud you for all the good things you did for the Town of Berlin and all the amazing energy you've put into it. And I'm certainly glad to hear you call this home, because it certainly is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your passive aggressive ways, I mean, who would have thought that polite little beauty walking through town would have been the bulldog making, assisting people, assisting people into encouraging people to the right place to park. I would have never thought that when I first met you, however, kudos, kudos, kudos. Dude, you walk quiet and carry a mighty stick, so I will say, I make a really nice sticker. I will say that was phenomenal. Arusa, girl, I can't wait to see where the future takes you. You are, I mean, if I didn't live in Berlin, I would come to Berlin because the things that you just stated were heartfelt, but yet it, you made Berlin, you polished up, just kind of get more. The two of you together, this wouldn't, this, this season I don't think would have been the same if we hadn't had both of you together. So kudos to you both. And every time I told you, they're like, good God, you're there again. But that was a good thing. It was like you guys never stopped. Great job, friends.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, let's get a group. Get one down here with them. I know, can act in. Get the two of you up here. Jake, over here to this side and then we can counter.
I'm sure it's you, you're tall as me. You're so tall.
Yeah, let's.
You're so tall.
So free, this is a good setup, is it good? Should we even this out a little bit or is the photo? Like.
What are you trying to say?
Well, we've got three here.
Okay, started from the left to the right.
Why don't we get. Let's do.
Getting tall is the shortest.
Well, let's.
Looks like my own son, Brad.
Because it's kind of like, oh, that's hot, isn't it? Perfect.
Thank you.
A little applause for both of you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Team, we've got like four more, but it's up and down. All right. Let's see. All right, agenda item number three, these are items for approval, so before you. And there will be a public comment. So 3A is motion 2024-46, change order number seven, Maran Park demolition. Town Administrator Mary Boland and Andrew from EDF are on point.
Sure. I can give a quick summary and then if there's any more detailed questions, I think we'll alter whatever. This change order encompasses. This change order encompasses a lot of the areas that have been expressed as desire for cleanup. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. It's well within, I apologize, I intended to pass out my spreadsheet on the grant. This brings us to within about 11,000. So we still have a little bit left there, but we are comfortable. And that includes all engineering as well at this point.
So that'll leave us with 11,565.
Roughness, yes. Do you have a spreadsheet? We shall be happy to send it to you tomorrow. I just did not bring my copies this evening.
Awesome. That's awesome. Good job. Both of you. Good job.
We will figure out a way to spend that one.
Yes, we will. Whether it's paint or something.
Yeah.
Senator, anything further from Andrew?
No, I don't have, I mean, we can break it down. They're just site structure, non-building related that had some interest in removals. So I'll take any questions about, split it into four different.
I'm just curious. Sorry, I'm just curious. Andrew, I'm just curious about D, the tank. So is, what, I guess in this picture, obviously, what is in this tank? Is it just dirt?
It's really not a tank per se. It's the foundation for biggest circular tank, probably a clarifier of some sort. So that's, again, concrete walls. These are all concrete walls.
And this is, we could talk about this area, you know, when we first started the Dallas app, so. Okay. Andrew, are we saving that little shed onto the right of this picture for something weird?
Yeah, do you see?
Yeah.
It's got the little colorful message on it of the apology. Yeah, yeah. Well, it's very, I was curious too, like Jake said.
Why are we not taking that down?
We can. There was some interest when the developer walked through. He suggested, let's save it. If it's timber, you know, it wouldn't be much of an effort to bring it down.
And that's certainly something that you look at with that. I think we can do this part and then maybe wait until our work session. At the next meeting and then we still have a little, if we want to change directions and take that down following our next meeting. Is that, that's something we can let you know about, right?
Yeah, his, yeah, his day of completion is October 17th. So we've got time. So he's gonna have equipment in there. He's, the equipment's still mobilized on site. I'm just surprised you cleaned up the entire back, butt back.
This has been done in conjunction with what we would like to see plus with the developers. If we have any input.
So the, what am I trying to think? If, if we wait to talk about that one structure, I really don't want to delay. I mean, the last time we talked about a change order, we asked for 30 days instead of 45. This is another 45. I mean, is this building gonna put us another 45 if we decide to do it?
That little shed? No, it's, it's a day.
I can take a hammer. Not, not that we should.
But it takes all the duck drop, you know.
It was not included because the developer expressed an interest in keeping it. But of course, it is still your project at this point. If you want that building to come down, then we can ask the contractor to develop a change order for that now.
Is your reason because it's, I mean, I'm just asking, just for argument's sake. Is your reason for taking it down because we're looking to take down everything else? Or is it just kind of, I'm asking.
That's why I was wondering. I didn't know the developer wanted to salvage it. So if there's a reason to keep it.
That was a discussion during the walk-through and suggested without the money elsewhere. Yes. A reason to keep it here.
And we have a discussion with them scheduled for our next meeting. So I mean, we have time to discuss that.
But those are things we should be made aware of, what he wants.
Well, that he wants.
I mean, we really, this is not his, his wants. This is our wants.
Well, he could pay that.
Well, yes and no. But it's our wants that are structured with kind of, if there's an item here like this that he would like to keep, it's not gonna put us behind. It's something that we're still in the discussion phase on. It's not high for, you know what I mean?
You're still in a kind of a safe zone here. You haven't fully expended the grant. So it's one of those things where if he expressed an interest in something that you have no objection to, there's no reason not to do it. But I would caution you that it is still your project at this point. Agreement has not been struck as yet. So it's, you get into a.
Anything further for Andrew?
I did do a walk-through today, but he's claiming that he's, you know, completed all the work and the change orders, but I do have some other items to chock out too.
I will say, yeah, the site really has come a long way, you know, last month. So I think it's, I mean, it's really cleaned up. And I did have a question about the wall that you see from Orange City Boulevard. That's a temporary wall, I believe Jimmy said last time. That's, that has all the graffiti on it. Was that a brick wall? Did we not have that?
Yeah, that was supposed to be a part of the change order and I'm asking why he hasn't taken that down.
Okay, I appreciate it.
That's one of my points of the site. It's that veneer. It's actually just a veneer that's attached to the main wall of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Any further questions? All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment regarding motion 2024-46? Seeing none, we'll take action by the council. Motion approved. A motion by, in place President Farrell.
Second.
We'll, we'll let the second go to Jack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. And let the record reflect the motion 2024-46 passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
We're gonna keep at least some portion of this alive for a while, so we keep you, Andrew. We might spend a penny.
Just let me go.
We might spend a penny a year, but just so that we keep Andrew.
I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is the agenda item 3B, motion 2024-47, extension of the moratorium on planning commission actions. Town Administrator Mary Boland, you're on point.
Again, this is fairly straightforward. Part of the moratorium that was set last month had an expiration date of September 15th with the caveat that it will be reviewed at the first council meeting of each month to determine whether or not to extend it an additional month. So if you determine to extend it at this point, we'll go to October 15th.
What is the difference between this and what's in that?
That's ordinance.
That's for. That's for.
I'll, I'll discuss that momentarily. That's the next agenda item. So anyway, that's the moratorium.
So the recommendation would be to extend the month, given that we do not have planning directors in place. So what is the matter?
And I'll also remind you that at any time, you can lift that moratorium. This is not locking you in to October, but it is giving that, that date.
So that's up for discussion now among the council. Will I keep it at September or move it to October? That's a really good question. October?
I'm fine with October. Yeah, October.
October.
What do you think, Jack?
Jack?
Yeah, we were kind of hoping to go that way last time, so.
We're there now.
I do have a question. By doing this, are we? We're not opening ourselves up to anything negative, are we?
Well, you mean legally?
Yeah.
No, you have every right to establish these kinds of.
And then my other question is, I understand the planning commission did not meet this month. Are they going to meet in September?
They are.
They are? Okay.
Yes.
And this doesn't preclude them from meeting?
Exactly.
No, no, I know.
I just want to make sure that.
And, and there are, there are other requests that have come in that are covered under the moratorium. But this allows us to take them in, begin examining them. And when the moratorium is lifted, then we're ready to move with them. So it's not to say that there is still work being done on, on projects that are outstanding. It's just keeping it to, to a point where it's not going through that final approval. Because having an actual planning director in to perform all the necessary functions of getting projects through the completions.
And even the items that are not allowed to be actioned under the moratorium can still be discussed.
Exactly.
So if there's a rezoning project that somebody wants to bring, if there's an annexation request or a site plan approval, those things can still be discussed. It just doesn't allow for action at this time.
Yeah, I think that's an important point to, that town probably still remains open for business. But there is a ceiling as far as how far it can go. And, you know, building permits are still being signed and approved. So.
Are we, I hate to be that guy, but are we losing any revenue from nothing moving forward anywhere?
Potentially.
But not really.
No, certainly.
Well, I mean, but the other side of it is too, like, it depends on the size of the project.
Yeah.
Because, and how you value it or.
Right. And it's not, I mean, it's not all that much. I also want to make sure we're not going too far down the path here.
But it was, I mean, anything that was, that we're thinking could possibly be losing, we already had. You know what I mean? So it's not like we did it. It wasn't something that we had already. It wasn't only the home.
All right. So we'll open up the public comment. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-47, just come forward, name and street name, please. Howard.
Jane Johnson, 263 Suenelane. I just had a quick question for the town administrator. How long do you anticipate this moratorium being? Because I remember at the last meeting, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we had some people in the hiring stage and they were doing some interviews and doing all that good stuff. It's a process, you know, finishing soon, hopefully?
Hopefully. That's, that's really the best that I could tell you is that we are actively seeking to hire a planning director. And unfortunately, I can't give any more concrete and answer than that.
Totally okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hey, you're leaving soon for school as well, aren't you?
I'm planning to go back to school in the winter.
First rate. Love that you're here.
Yeah. Let me hear a couple of fun things. Great to see you.
Good to see you. All right, we'll take, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
To look through 2024-47.
To extend the moratorium to October. All right, motion made by council member Ner.
Second.
Seconded by council member Nichols. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Let the record reflect that the vote's unanimous. And motion 2024-47 extends the moratorium to October.
Thank you.
Up next, agenda item number four, which is the public hearing on ordinance 2024-05.
Before we start, I want to explain, something very odd happened with the printing of this ordinance. The first couple of paragraphs there, you'll see that there's, this is what is in your pocket. Not one was just reviewed this evening. In your pocket, the first couple of paragraphs, a line appears to have been shifted. It should have crossed words out and instead somehow it shifted up between two lines. So the version that you were given this evening is correct. And that is also available at the, at the table and will be posted to the website. PDFs can be funny creatures sometimes.
I'm gonna just summarize it before we do the public hearing, just so everybody's aware. Under section A2, the second line down, the strike through should begin at three. Complete sets of the site plans on sheets no larger than 24 by 36 inches, that ends the strike through. And the amendment would be to complete sets, to say, complete sets of plans as required. Correct, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. On item number three, under A3, would be on the second line, the strike through starts at or after 45 days of the date the site plan, plans were submitted. That ends the strike through.
Correct.
Section B, line one, strike through begins at two copies of and then ends the strike through. B1, strike through begins on line two, within 45 days of the date the plan was submitted. That ends the strike through. Number B3 is a strike through for the entire item three. C1, second line in, within 60 is the strike through and it carries over to page two. Days after the site plan was officially submitted, that ends the strike through. So we'll now open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-05, amending chapter 108. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council? All right, we'll keep it open for just another minute. The quickest minute we've ever seen. All right, closing public hearing. So now we'll take action by the council.
So for B1, B1, line two, scratching out, within 45 days of the date the plan was submitted. I guess what I'm asking is, shouldn't the planning and zoning commission have some sort of deadline to say, yea or nay?
Part of what will happen with this ordinance, and this, this goes back to item A1, where it indicates all applicants shall follow the Town of Berlin Site Plan Review Procedure. That procedure will be one of the first things that the new planning director will work on to be established for exactly how, how these things will go. It, it's, it can be problematic to make your code too specific because then it gets you into what, and it's not just on the town. It's also the expectation from the, from the developer that.
These artificial deadlines are really, have the ability to cause problems.
Right.
Someone files a, a site plan and if the planning commission hasn't approved it or denied it within 45 days, and they don't make a recommendation, then it's, if you look at B3, failure to make a recommendation within 45 days is considered a recommendation.
Oh.
And, you know, that's an artificial timeline that is just, in my opinion, it's a recipe for disaster. Because oftentimes, the first time a site plan is submitted, I mean, it, it takes months sometimes to work through issues on it. And, you know, the planning commission wants this over here and that over there. 45 days is, I think it's impossible.
From an outsider looking in at that.
Dave, anyone, I had talked about that particular provision for, for years.
And this also plays into why I require, or why I requested we implement the 30-day filing because those dates can be played with so that they are, people are submitting things knowing that they're pushing a deadline that forces a group's hands. And, and so doing it this way, allowing it to be a little more flexible and open, removes those artificial forcings.
It gives them more tools.
Exactly.
Which is really what we need to do. All right, so action by the council.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Ordinance 20, number four.
24-05.
Okay. Approve ordinance 2024-05.
Motion by council member Orks to approve ordinance 2024-05. And seconded by council member Nichols. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Let the record reflect that ordinance 2024-05 passed unanimously.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Rick.
Oh, and I have your phone down here.
Oh, thank you. You're responsible for answering all calls.
Actually, on this note, can I ask, just because I came upon this on a private matter, the building code in Town of Berlin, I know we had emails about, that be coming before us soon about updating that code?
And again, that's a matter of that specific date should never have been codified. So the language will be changed to just simply say the current version or something.
International building code.
It does have language, as Dave Gaskell pointed out, that says as amended from time to time. But it's not, it's not as clear as it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to town administrators reporting departmentals.
The only thing that I have this evening is that most town offices will be closing Thursday at noon for an employee gathering and will stay closed for the day.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary or the departmental reports in the back?
Mary, can you, I understand that Broad Street Leadership is, they're staging now. When will the actual, do we have a time when the actual?
Do you know we do? And I don't remember what Jamie told me. He expects, I want to say that he said within 60 days. Obviously, there's any number of factors that can affect that. But one of the things that will hold up the. factors that can affect that, but one of the things that will hold up the absolute final completion is that we're going to be waiting for a generator. It's very similar to what Tim has experienced with delays and.
Well, how about, like, when the actual start, and the only reason I'm asking is.
That, yeah, that, sure.
Okay.
I don't know if they have to wait for the generator before they can start.
All right, the only reason I was asking, because the notice came out and there might be dislocation and whatnot, so, so people are aware.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the town administrators report or departmentals?
Yeah, the questions are cheap. Chief, are we starting to see a decline in the number of citations issued per block a street?
Trick question. We actually have the second camera on the line.
Right.
Hits the first camera, we definitely have a decline on.
Yes.
So what we, the big number we have is the actual number of pay violations. We get to see that more so, we'll concentrate on that more so than the first number was 930 violations for that first month and a few days. So we'll actually have that hard number, and probably a week with the actual invoice of everything that moves to the next month. So again, it comes incrementally with each month, but we've definitely saw, seen a reduction in speed. We were seeing a lot of 50-plus, and those numbers have gone down and school's going to make, make the big difference in the change in numbers. So we're going to tell you a little bit later on how, what the numbers really mean. We need more than two months to really make that projection. But I, I think that it's going to stop.
My, my perception of the speeding on Flower Street and Red Street has actually changed. My perception these days is that Gee Whiz folks have slowed down a lot.
I knew 15.
When I sat here a month ago and we talked about.
We're about 21 and 45 now.
We talked about writing the letter to the commissioners to make the, the speed limit consistent, delay the Flower Street, I truly believe that that made a huge impact. Like I said, my husband and I sit on that front porch regularly and we can tell you, yep, let's take it, let's take it. And lately, we're almost like this.
Uh huh.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, consistency all the way, you know what I mean? And I can say that my uncles down within Brattle Town on the further end of Flower Street in the county maintenance, it they, it doesn't, they're not hearing the roaring like they would before. And again, what the chief said and I said today, leave the indicator tonight, when school starts, that's when the true test is going to come.
Going to have some upset parents.
And again, we're really going to be pushing out the first week of citations for Peach Lane. We don't call the flowers, we call it like on Peach Lane.
Yeah.
And again, that will even change it more so, I would.
Mm-hmm.
Because again, a lot of that is Ocean Sees, the school, and the dump itself. So some people never made it all the way down to our end of Flower Street.
Right.
And the county, they're stepping up, again, what did it take, a whole day to go ahead and make that change in speed? They definitely saw the issue also.
Yeah.
I'm really impressed the council's work.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, any other questions regarding town administrators report or departmentals?
I just want to say this in regards to that, and I wasn't going to say until it was my speak, time to speak, but because we are talking about these cameras, there's such a, such a big word going out, oh, well, you guys are making so much money off of these cameras and people speeding, oh my God, the town is making so much money. What's that going to mean to our tax base? Chief, can you please dispel the myth that we are raking in dollars as far as the town of Berlin ourselves with these traffic ticket things?
Again, our first invoice was for $4,700. Again, that was out of the 937 violations over the first month and the last couple days and nights of the end of June. And with that, 211 people have paid so far. So again, it's going to be slow and you're going to have to wait till you flag people, some costs, expenses and those sort of things. Again, it's $26, if we have police cars sitting there at that location and getting someone doing that 55, we're talking about $160. If we catch that one car that was going the, the 80 miles an hour, again, we're talking about citations would be a lot bigger. So we definitely know it's not about the money. It's about people just changing their, their habits. And, and again, it's starting to happen.
Thank you. And I've said this before, this is a revenue source that is intended to decrease.
And the other, the other side of this is too, the chief has a lot of capital equipment too that's needed, so it's not like this money is just going to get slushed over to a different line item. We're keeping it right in public safety. So the, the tools that he needs for his department and officers to be able to carry out public safety for the town, that's where that reinvestment is going to happen.
Oh, I know that, I just want people to understand that this is not like we're cha-ching raking in the dough, it's not.
Well, I said, I said Natalie and the chief and Mary won, because I was like, I'm sure this is going to come up. And it was a $700,000 calculation annually, I was like.
Let's say that 700,000.
That would have to be added by your father, we didn't have enough.
That would really catch up on your capital.
Yeah.
I'll take care of this.
Yeah, that's not happening, folks.
But I will say this, to end that whole conversation, if this speed, if this, if these speed cameras train folks well enough to save a life, to stop an accident, then it's worth whatever it costs.
Yes.
Point blank period.
And the nice part is, it doesn't cost us anything.
Correct.
Right, chief?
That's correct.
So, that's the nice part. Unless, unless you're speeding, it's not going to cost you anything.
It's not going to cost you anything.
You go to Speed Lane, it's not going to cost you anything.
Just a little more than 12 over.
I go 12 under now. I'm going the other way, that's not.
I know, you're right.
Any other questions regarding the town administrators report or departmental?
I just want to say one last thing, it was mentioned under Kelsey's report, Shoreburg's night was a lot of fun.
It was.
We had great turnout.
Good time.
Everybody threw in, I think even Charlie was an angle at baseball.
Charlie's an angle too. Charlie's an angle too, but yes, it was a good time.
Good time, I encourage everyone to go next year.
It was a lot of fun. It's a good time. All right, let's move on to comments from the public. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council, starting with the vice president, Burrell.
I just had, did not prepare as far as can you say, I read about sandpipers.
Sandpipers, the subsidiary of Chesapeake Utilities, yes.
Could we have them in, just to help ensure our public that, that what's under our streets is safe? There was a hole that, that exploded in a fair ladder, folks got killed, and it was a terrible thing. So, so I, I think, we could ask them to come just to put our public at ease that, that what is under our streets is being maintained.
And we have an agreement with them as well, that, similar to Comcast, so a utility agreement, and then also, just as an FYI, a great idea, we'll have them come in and talk and give a brief presentation, but if you ever think that there's a leak in, chief, you can probably speak to this a little bit better than me, but they, they have a, a number that you can call, I think it's available on their website. If you smell something, you can call, if the proactive check, it, it's not going to hurt anything. Or if you call, if you call the chief or 911, they can help get you to the right folks. Do you ever get that checked as well, in an emergency, you know what I mean? Like if you feel like that is something that needs to be done? Because we certainly don't want a L.A. here.
Yeah.
But we'll also get the Chesapeake Utilities folks to come in and give a presentation.
Right.
No problem. Anything else?
No, that's all right.
Okay. Councilmember Ner?
Nothing.
Uh, councilmember Nichols? All right. Councilmember Ors?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, want to give a shout out to, and a thank you to all of everyone, businesses and town staff, public works, police for what I consider a great Peach Festival. I know we tried out some new things with slowing down traffic and whatnot, it seemed to go well, so I just wanted to say thanks to everyone involved with that. A big shout out and kudos to chief for National Night Out. It was another great event and, and the, our community partners who helped out, that was, it's one of my favorite events personally, so I do enjoy coming to that, so good job. The, Mary, if you could maybe touch base with Jamie, the new parking lot over at the athletic center or athletic fields down, down there?
Little League Field.
Yeah, Little League. I think the drainage goes out, like south from that direction, or well, I guess down 113, but can we kind of just make sure that that has not added to our stormwater flood runoff issues?
We can look at it, however, from several years ago when that project was first proposed, we let the county handle that.
So is that parking lot in town?
Sorry.
Is it in town?
It is.
It is. But there was an agreement struck by a prior administrator to allow the county to handle their own stormwater.
Well, can we, can we talk, can we look into it?
Sure.
So what they, is that, I guess, if I'm listening to what Jack is saying and then listening to what you're saying, I'm sorry to cut in on your moment, but is there a way that even though they were instructed to take care of their own, that their own could be actually affecting ours?
I couldn't, I don't think we can.
I guess you want to see the stormwater.
I just, I just want to make sure that it's not causing more problems.
It would show. It's adjacent to a stormwater plane.
So, then, yeah, I guess. And then finally, I'm just curious, I got up here this, this afternoon and I have this plethora of poster. Does anyone know why I was selected to give home with these?
Oh, Kelsey asked me to drop that out for you. She said it's from the, from the museum, Taylor House.
Okay.
Um, that's what I was.
Hey, apparently we're doing some sort of, we're doing a play.
Shakespeare's.
Shakespeare's. Full town theme is a company. Shakespeare, 16th at the museum.
Make sure you put them on the proper place.
Jackie, do you know?
Hi.
You're the leader now.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Any, any other?
Next time, I'm just going to write them down.
Watch one of your hands.
No, that's good, thank you all, and we'll see you.
Councilmember Green?
A little bit of what Jack was saying, I just, the Calumby Taylor House Museum, I happened to attend a concert there last night, and I was reflecting as I walked back how special the place is quite frankly. You know, the One Way Ride Fun Run was actually, you know, hosted at the museum. That event, they came before us and, you know, I would recall that a few months ago, some citizen came before us, it was Lambert, I believe, or what class he was. That event, it's been a little while now, but I don't want to pass the time in the youth how successful it was. They had over 200 runners and walkers that were out there, and, you know, many of them were dressed up, they had a lot of fun, it was really kind of hilarious frankly, and we were happy to be able to, you know, to be a part of it. And the museum had a little after event, where people were literally dressed up in tuxes, wedding dresses.
I like the tux t-shirt.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my boy, she, you know, loves these sorts of things, so she, you know, she never misses an opportunity to dress us boys up. But, and then later on that, that night was the One Way Ride movie, the showing, which was awesome. But then, yeah, like I said, Peach Festival, of course, and, you know, that kind of been on the record, I think the main street should be closed on that event, but I'm happy to see that the museum has worked with the police department, and I think what happened this year, I will get off of the street closure ideally. It is dangerous downtown, I think we all see that, people are just unaware of what's happening, but the police department, you guys really did a great job. I liked the West Street closure from the public works department that set those up, I think that helped a lot, less than Amcor's Baker being closed. It did compress people's speed limits because the visibility was high, so, you know, the folks that aren't aware of really where they're going, looking for parking spaces, doing that emergency hunt, they were forced to slow down. So I think that was a great effort and appreciated the, the awareness that it took to make that change, but I think it was important and it did have some success, I'd hate to see something bad happen there. But the point being, the museum is really, I think, a jewel in our crown and continues to grow popularity. You know, there were over 200 people there last night for the Berlin airlift station, which I learned quite a bit of things about, the potential livestock event that was coming back here in the early 70s. You know, it was, it was a great event and just kudos to museum folks that are, they're working hard, do a lot of great things for town.
I forgot something.
Put you at the end.
It's my age, but, but National Night Out again this year was tremendous, just like the, thank the chief for his leadership with that event, and to Jimmy Charles and his crew as a whole. I rode by Park Wednesday morning and, and everything was, was pristine. Everything was in its place like it should have been, not, not, he, he was just, I think, a tremendous job. Thank you for your leadership, Jimmy, with, with getting all of that done, even to help the museum.
That was great, they went from one spot to another spot.
Yeah.
It's like it never happened.
Just like it never happened.
How you guys even took the flags down, I mean, like, you were on it.
Thank you. Seconded Jimmy Charles.
Two jobs, two jobs.
It's a group effort, so that's all we'll say.
Thank you. The funny part is, is I actually sent an email. The, the country singer Jimmy Charles is in my inbox too, and I included him in a statement highway email.
I responded, Mary, and he asked something.
It's like, you need me to say it here? I think you got a long personal message, I'm like.
Of course, to write a song and sing about, you know, the ugly Jimmy Charles and that's true in Berlin.
It, it does cause havoc sometimes when I'm shifting between the inbox, it's funny. Yes, I want to, we'll go on to comments from the mayor, but kudos to the law enforcement partners that were there for National Night Out, state police playing basketball, county presence, local presence, it was really good to see.
It was, again, it was one of the best we've ever had.
I think each year you say that, which is good to hear. I like that.
We had more vendors than we've ever had before. Pop's Pizza Cave, Pop's Kitchen gave out pizza during the duration.
Wow.
Just think about that, just delivered and delivered them. Where did you add that? You end up having sunrise, you know, providing the food for the whole time, two bounces. So again, thank you, it was a great community in which we live.
And, and you.
And Jimmy Charles and Jamie, seconded up.
I agree. And then the, the Peach Festival went south after that to the combines, there was a lot of good things happening in our, in our area, so.
It's always the hottest here.
It is, in every way, it's fun.
It's a breezy spot, so.
I mean, there was bugs, but breeze.
It was air conditioned inside the museum.
And thank you to councilmember Nichols and, and your family for hosting the table for the community center to help, help spread the word on that.
We would, it would, my children know that it wouldn't be a summer without mom volunteering them for at least eight to 12 hours of community service. So they were just like, so, but they got a full day of gaming out of it, and they were very, I mean, those guys and girls, they sold the community center. I was impressed because I was too busy performing for the cakewalk, but I could hear my children saying, hey, we want to have some more information about our community center. So it was, it's, to me, to hear from the younger ones, Arusa, to hear from not just my children, but the other young people that make up our community, selling, promoting, giving our town back to the people that come in to visit, and most of them were like, we don't live here, and my boy was like, but you're here visiting, so here, how about you take some information? I was like, so hearing that from you guys, that means that we as adults are doing our part, providing them a safe, comfortable place that they're proud to live in. So kudos to the town of Berlin for that.
And thank you, and your family, can I believe funds? I don't, but I think that you raised some funds for the community.
So I'm, you're right, I believe it. So, which part?
I mean, I didn't.
Oh, you're, you're talking about potential grants?
Oh, no, I wasn't going to say anything, because I didn't count any of the monies, all we did was put it in the bucket and handed it off.
Well, now, that portion was sent to.
And those parts too.
Taylor Alstom. But then also wanted to say that we did receive a $100,000 grant through DHCD, that's starting to get out in the press as well, for preliminary engineering and architectural design for the community centers, that's huge. We did make an application that was greater than that, but this is going to put us in a, a footing to be able to receive future funding for that project. We also have a federal year mark that's in the, in the wings, has made it out of committee, so that's favorable usually. If it makes it out of committee, it's likely that it, it could be passed. We did make a request for $500,000, got reduced, I think, to $480, somewhere around in that range, but it's still good money to get us toward the work that we're doing, so. Then on staying the line of the community center, vice president Burrell and council member Nichols. Then on staying in line with the community center, vice president Burrell and councilmember Nichols, Mary and Gaswell and I, met with a community centered group, I know, but you're still part of the group. But the, the committee's gonna be advancing a survey that was approved by the mayor and council to study, well, not really study, but gauge from the public what type of amenities and facilities folks would like to see, as well as estimated time of use and things of that nature. They will be available at places of worship, downstairs and customer service, they'll be sent out to the homes. It'll be available online. There are incentives for taking the survey, it'll be deployed, I think, next week in time for Jeans for Jesus over at St. Paul's. And then also run through the full month of September, and then the committee will meet the beginning of October to review those findings. So they say that a good statistical number for us would be 300 respondents, we're aiming for 1,000, so that's really our push. We wanna see 1,000, at least 1,000 responses, so. With that, I think the giveaways would be five $100 gift cards, and then I think we've got some remaining. Whoever speculated our volunteers, boards and commission members, I think 11, single scoop ice cream, so we'll give those away too to go along with it, so increase some of the drawings. That's really all I have, but a lot of good stuff for the community center.
And we selected a firm.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Hail the architecture, and we were kind of in limbo on that because we had approved moving forward with them in open session, but then we received a $100,000 grant from DHCD and we're like, man, is it gonna come with strings about how we have to source a firm and things of that nature? But fortunately, we're able to move forward with Hail the Architecture, so.
We have, we have a few small hoops to jump through with C D V G, but it shouldn't be.
We don't have to go recreate the whole wheel.
Exactly.
And, and she was, even without us really having something in place that's ironclad, she was still in attendance at our, our previous meeting, so a lot of good comments and conversations coming from them. So, good, thank you. All right, we'll take any comments from the press? Seeing none, vice president Burrell?
Before, before we adjourn, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to clarify for everyone listening. Now, next meeting, we are planning on a work session with Coastal Ventures probably.
That'll begin at 6:00, is that right, Mary? Or did we say 5:30? I think we said 6:00.
I think we said 5:30.
5:30, okay, 5:30.
So just, so 5:30 on the 26th, work session with the parent, 57, and then.
7 o'clock's regular. Yep. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both? Thank you. All in both, you gotta stay all night. All right, what do you want to say?